Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call this Orangeburg County Council meeting, December the 2nd, 2019, to order. We've got to ask Councilmen really be oriented to give us a moment of thanks before we proceed any further.
We'd love to give a moment of thanks. As we thank thee for this day, we thank thee for the opportunity that it affords us, most of all for the simple things of life.
Amen.
We thank thee for Jesus Christ, for our ups and our downs. Thank thee for the season called Christmas season, where we enjoy our families, our friends, and our candidates. We ask that to this Orangeburg County, and allow the council to take care of the needs of the county. These are the descendants bears in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Owens. I hope each and every one of you council members have had the opportunity to look at the minutes of November the 12th and November the 18th meetings. And if you have, I would appreciate a motion in second that those minutes be approved as written unless you see something noted to be corrected.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Owens that the minutes be received as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. The motion is carried. Again, we welcome you to our meeting today. And beginning of our meetings, we have public comments of two areas, public comments of agenda items, and public comments of other matters. Before we be open the floor for that, we're going to ask Council members who allows to get a motion in second to amend the agenda.
Chairman, I move that we amend the agenda on items one and two by adding a public hearing to those two.
Second. Second. Moved by Mr. Harrod, seconded by Mr. Lawrence that we amend the agenda to add public hearing. All of the information have been in the paper, it just was a technical error that was admitted. All in favor of the motion in second, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Harrod. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comments of agenda items only. On agenda items, now remember, if there's a public hearing at that item, you wait until that agenda item to address that. But if anything else on any other items on agenda that you'd like to address that don't have a public hearing on, now is the time. State the agenda item number and you'll...
You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm assuming this planning commission resolution and ordinance first reading, number 12.
Okay.
The reason we're here tonight is because of the rezoning of a particular building that was a staple of our community for some time. It used to be known as Mayor's Grocery. I had an opportunity to speak on it on the last meeting. And we're currently looking to have it re-zoned to basically utilize it as a restaurant. It had the original designation of a restaurant, lounge. A lot of the community spoke out against the lounge. Fortunately, but the reason that we would like to do that is because as it was a staple before, we'd like to go ahead and continue that and have it to become a staple of the community for this day forward. The area being in the shape that it's currently in, it needs a facelift. It needs an opportunity to come back and basically give opportunities for the people within the neighborhood. And I'm hoping that I'm doing the right thing by stepping forward and trying to make that so. As a general contract out, my life is building, so I've seen a lot of communities turn around. And in essence, what I'd like to be able to do is do the same in the community that raised me. I currently live in Jacksonville, Florida, but my entire family lives here in Orangeburg. This is probably only .5 of the amount of family that we currently have here. And the holistic purpose of this is because a lot of youth, once they graduate, tend to go ahead and move on to go to other communities because they don't see an opportunity to grow within our city. And I want to try and help change that. I told the commission that, um, council members last time, that I actually did, this is the second building that I bought down here in the area. I bought a building down on Russell Street. And I'd just like to be able to take some of my experiences and bring them home and help to change the community. We have very, very good universities here within our city. And with the talent that comes in in order to get an education, even then, those individuals either move back to their home or they go back to other communities and they enhance them as opposed to ours. And we need to stop losing our talent. Therefore, I'm hopefully here to have an opportunity to put forward that effort and allow for us to have some of that talent stay home as well. I just want to see good things happen, and that's what I'm here for.
Thank you. Did you say... Oh, I missed it.
The name is Tony Grant.
Tony Grant. If you have any comments on it, I've read, I read all the information. For some reason, I don't know why, trying to gush with you, I read a lot of stuff on it. But I saw what the planning commission, like, they said because of spot zoning, so and so and so. And the people came out and all the people that signed off on that. So I don't know, Mr. Grant, um, just whatever.
I've been representing that area for 24 years now. I know the area well. I commend Mr. Grant on his desire to come back and want to move this county in maybe a different direction, but I also respect the desires of my constituents. And those who signed a petition do not want it for several reasons, and I'm afraid that I have to go along with the majority. In the meeting, it is my understanding that there were four against and one for of the committee meeting, where there were several people present. You were the only one to speak for it, and there were five who spoke against. And as I foresaid, the petition was signed by 14 of the residents, and I have to go along with the majority. I respect your desires, but also respect my constituents' desires.
The only thing that can be of council's so desired, it would to send it back or something like that. And that, this is, I'm the chairperson, but I'm not the council, hold council. And I have to respect the person. I usually ask people who represent a district for how they, and mostly time, council usually follow that protocol unless there's a legal reason why they can't. So that's where I'm at.
I support Councilwoman Cooper because we use to support each other in this situation. I think what put a cog in yours is allowance. Allowance to do anything. Looking at the past, as it's a mark for the future, it has a bad connotation to it. Now, what you need to do is withdraw your request and go back and go to round zero. Bring all your information, including your PowerPoint. Give me some information on how much money you're going to invest in it, whether it could be 10 cents or $10. As important, tell me what kind of business you're going to run. Of course, you know this, being a contractor, it's not easy to set up a business and protect your income, et cetera. So you have a lot of homework to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain. All right. Appreciate it. The other, now we close that portion of the public comments and go into public comments of other matters. That means if anything else with anyone else that's not on the agenda, that you need to bring forth to Congress, current council, you can do that this time. Hearing none, we will close the portion of the public comments and go into our regular agenda. And the regular agenda, we have audits and resolution. These two are audits and second readings. And first one is an audit to enact a user rate for Orangeburg County broadband services. It has, I'm going to let the administrator give a summary of what you're talking about, and then I will open the floor for public hearing, and then we'll vote.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As a part of our broadband initiative to establish broadband in the county and increase the areas of availability, with the times when we started, our offerings were very robust, but for us to be able to keep up, we have to add tiers of services because more things are being offered and needed by the community as we go more digital in our everyday lives. So we added a tier of 100 megs, 500 meg, and 1 gig to the residential and small business size from 500 to 1 gig. And those tiers are added as a different offering structure and allow, also with several, a few rate changes that also added additional bandwidth. So it's our recommendation for approval to you as council.
You've heard the explanation from the administrator. The floor is now open for public hearing. If anyone have any comments about this, or at this time, we will take an approach to put them in comment. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Now, Mr. Council, if you don't have any question, I would intend motion in second, the second reading on this.
So moved, Chairman.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wimbley, seconded by Ms. Cooper Smith. Second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. Second audit, or second reading also is an audit to amend in section 6.14 of the Orangeburg County Court of Audits to provide for the adoption of technical codes. Technical codes, billing permits rates, demolition rates, house billing, moving rates, and temporary signs and other related matters. Mr. Administrator, for the publics on that, this is pretty self-explanatory, but maybe just to give it a little bit more clarity.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Every so often, we have to update and follow the technical codes as established by the state of Sacramento on that as well with our building code. And this is just an update of the code sections to make updates that we have made in the past, like the changes you made or the fee structure, fine structure, the changes that we made that need to be updated. And the rest of it is just simply following the enactments of codes and changing the fees to reflect what we're currently charging.
You've heard the summary from the administrator. Floor is now open for public hearing on this item, also, if there's any what have any Hearing none, we have closed the public hearing and ask for a motion in second to approve item two.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and seconded by Ms. Lawrence Frazier that approve the item as explained by the administrator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. There it is, an audit in first reading by Tal only, and this is an audit providing for the issues of not to exceed $3 million sewer system improvement revenue bond series 2020 for West Ettestow Phase IV sewer project of Orangeburg County, South Carolina to provide, describe the purpose for which the proceeds shall be expended and to provide for the payment thereof and other related matters. Mr. Administrator, this again, a little, this is just by Tal only, so I guess it's pretty self-explanatory unless you want to add anything else.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And for the public's sake, this is the project that was published in the TND some days ago where it showed that we received USDA money to do additional upgrades to the sewer system in Western Beatty still. And this is a project we've been working on for a long time. It started a long time ago, and this is actually going to benefit the, one of the local schools, Ettestow High School, with their sewer upgrade that's much needed, and the HEC has been waiting for this to happen because we have been working with them as well.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the explanation on that. I guess, Ms. Lawrence, you want to get a motion in second for by Tal only?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, personally represent that area, and seconded by Ms. Cooper Smith that this item be passed. Question?
Mr. Administrator, I don't like some areas being able to get funding, and some areas can't get funding because of reasons. Can you explain that to me a little bit? Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. Council Rabanel, this is, it has a lot to do with USDA funding mechanism. They have certain medium household income requirements to receive these grant funds. Some areas of the county are more robust than others, so the lower income areas are the ones that these grants are provided to help fund. In other areas, we're not allowed to use those funds in those areas, so we have to use other means such as capital project sales tax, lighting districts, sewer districts, and things of that nature. So that, there's a distinct difference in the area, and it has to also be a zone that's qualified for USDA. Just one of those areas? Yes, sir. That is correct.
It has a move in second, so all in favor of passing by Tal only? Let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. Audit in first reading, we have about a level of 12 of these. Item number four, this is an audit to amend the agreement for development of a joint county industrial park by in between Dorchester County and Orangeburg County to providing for the development of a joint county industrial park, so as to include properties of the Hoops of Orangeburg LLC and other matters related thereto.
Mr. Chairman, I yield to the attorney flag now. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
What you have before you is, well, first of all, let me say item number four, item number 10, and item number 13 are related. Item four deals with places this expansion in a multi-county industrial park. Item 10 deals with the approval of a special source revenue credit agreement, and that's what the prospect is requesting this evening by first reading. And item number 14, excuse me, 13, is an inducement resolution. They, the council, on behalf of the prospects, designed not only to have this padded out ordinance, but also solidify or nail down the inducement resolution today, I will read. The prospect is the oats of Orangeburg LLC. They are seeking to invest a minimum of $5 million in 4.8 renovations and improvements, 2,000 and other personal property here in Orangeburg County. There is no new jobs promised as a result of this investment, however, they believe it is crucial in retaining the 230 employees that they do have of those 230, 195 are full-time employees. They are seeking a 10-year SSRC, and they're also seeking to place this expansion in a multi-county industrial park with Dorchester County.
Question?
Four, 10, and 13, you said they are related, correct?
Yes, sir. Four, 10, and 13, correct.
If they are related in the future, is it possible that we could get them in line between like four, five, and six instead of spreading it out like that to make it much simpler?
Captain Rabanel, I think that is part of the vendor system for putting the agenda packets together. We have some outside software, and you put ordinances in a certain place and resolutions and other, and that's also what our rules of conduct provide for in the ordinances. So while it does seem odd, you can always vote, you know, if somebody can make a motion that says, "I want to pass items three, 10, and 13."
I mean, that's fine. That is not what we are thinking, you know?
And it also reflects the time in which they come into the system as they are given to us by economic development. We implement it in system. So some of these projects, we don't know until the last minute whether they're ready for inducement or can produce the documents to put before you, so therefore, they may end up on the end even though it's, even though it has to do with something else.
Can we get, go ahead and explain 10 and 13, and then we'll vote on all three at the same time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If that pleases, Council. Okay. So we have explained four. Now, item 10, 10 is seeking to approve the SSR agreement that the prospect is seeking. They are seeking a 10-year SSRC, one that would reduce the fee of taxes in years one through three to $35,000, years four to five to $50,000, and years six to 10 to $175,000. And year 11, the company will pay full regular ad valorem taxes. And that is to seek the approval of that agreement with those details or that structure as to an SSRC payment. And if there are no questions, item number, moving to item number 13 is the inducement resolution, which basically is capsules, the, it, it's a resolution that has the skeleton of the points of the SSRC agreement and to approve the placing of this business expansion in a multi-county industrial park.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I think for the public information, this is really the method is often being transferred to a private venture, and that's why I'm going on the tax rule. Is that right?
That is, that has happened, and again, they're putting this money into renovating and I guess rejuvenating the company, so it's important, but it is, there is a problem.
Private only now.
That is my understanding, Council.
So moved, we pass four, 10, and 13.
Second. As explained. Moved by Mr. Wimbley, seconded by Ms. Cooper Smith that we pass four, 10, and 13 as explained by the attorney and the administrator and all of us. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. Thank you so much. Item five is also a first reading of an audit authorizing execution and delivery of an agreement to buy and sell real estate by in between Orangeburg County City Industrial Park Commission and Palmetto Site Work Services LLC acting for itself, one of more affiliates or other project sponsors pertaining to certain real property owned by Orangeburg County City Industrial Park, authorizing the sale of such real property by that park commission to the company and the other matters relating thereto. But this, now, this is order, Attorney.
Attorney. Okay. Good evening. What you have before you is an ordinance to approve the contract that exists between Orangeburg County, Portford County City Industrial Park Commission, and site, Palmetto Site Work Service LLC. Palmetto Site Work is seeking to purchase 5.5 acres in the industrial park for the construction of a site build.
It's going to be passed by city account.
Well, it's been passed by the CCIP Commission, and so the county needs to ratify this. As to the city, I don't believe they need to ratify, as long as this is ratified by the commission. That's my understanding.
Is it not?
It's just the county.
Just the county.
Since the commission has also voted on.
Thank you so much. Motion in second, the first reading passes. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wimbley, seconded by Mr. Rabanel, that passes of item five, which is the audit for authorizing sale of the property and park. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item six is an audit first reading also authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by in between Orangeburg County.
Mr. Chairman, first second, time is six, seven, eight, and nine, I'll be yielding to the attorney flag now.
Six, seven, eight, and nine.
Thank you, sir.
So what I will do is, I'm going to read each one, and then you explain each one, and then we'll vote on all four. Is that good?
May I suggest something, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
They are unrelated.
Okay.
So, but...
One at a time.
Yes, sir. And then, but, past those topics, there are some related ones, so I can group, I can put them together for Chairman.
You said six, seven, and what else?
Well, six, seven, eight, and nine, but these are unrelated.
And 11. I was just yielding to have, not to have to keep saying every time I yield to attorney flag.
I got you. You were telling me that.
Yeah, I was letting you know I was yielding to him.
That is good.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll have to look to the...
I will stay here.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I appreciate that. Okay, item number six is an audit authorizing the execution and delivery of infrastructure credit agreement by in between Light River County and Tree Brand Packaging, Inc., providing for a payment of a special source revenue credit and other matters related thereto.
Yes, sir. May please, Council, like I said, item six and item 11 are related, okay? Item six deals with the passage of a special source revenue credit agreement by Council. Item 11 seeks to place this expansion in a multi-county industrial park. We have an agreement with Dorchester County. So that's the two related topics and what they're trying to do. The prospect is Tree Brand Packaging, Inc. They have promised a minimal capital investment of $790,000 in machinery and equipment. They have already invested $612,778 in land building and also an additional $264,976 in machinery and equipment. They're seeking a SSR agreement that would bring the assessment from 10.5% to 6%. And the SSRC would be for a 20-year term. And of course, the multi-county industrial park that's seeking to partner with would be the multi-county industrial parks with Orangeburg County and Dorchester County.
All righty. Item six and 11, any questions? None? Could I get a motion in the second for passes of item six and 11?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved by Mr. Rabanel, seconded by Mr. Livingston that we pass item six and 11 related to Tree Brand Packaging, Inc. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. And motion is carried. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Attorney, item number seven is an audit to amend the existing amended and restated agreement for development of a joint county industrial park by in between Orangeburg County and Dorchester County to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property now or to be hereafter owned and operated by a company identified for the time being as project profile located in Orangeburg and authorizing other related matters.
May please, Council, this matter has its roots in a SSR agreement that was approved by Council back in December 31st of 2017. The prospect constructed a hotel in the Orangeburg area. As part of the SSR agreement, they had an incentive of a 10-year SSRC that could be expanded an additional five years if the company announced that it was going to construct another hotel within 10 years from that agreement to start construction in year 12. And that's what they're doing here today. Now, the ordinance before you seeks to expand the multi-county industrial park to, to include this new construction that would be in the Santee area. So it's a promise of a minimum of $5 million in this new construction of a hotel.
Okay. Question? Could I get a motion in second for passes of item seven?
So moved, Chairman.
Second. Moved by Mr. Rabanel and seconded by Mr. Livingston for passes of item seven, project profile. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. And motion is carried. Item eight is an audit authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by in between Orangeburg County and Blackwater T LLC project, Orange A, providing for a payment of fee rule of taxes and other matters related thereto. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. I will refer to this matter as Project Orange A. It is a solo... It is a solar farm. The prospect has promised a capital investment with a minimum, at a minimum of eighty-five point zero-nine billion. That is mostly in machinery and equipment. There's no new job promised as a result of this because of the automation involved with the solar panels. They're seeking a special source revenue credit that would have a thirty-year term, and they're also seeking, well, they will, they haven't done it with this ordinance, but they will seek to place this expansion at a later date in a multi-county industrial park that we partner with Dorchester County.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Aye? Any other comments, questions, or not? If you can get a motion in a second for first readings.
We pass one last meeting.
If I may, that was the inducement resolution.
First reading of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance for the fee agreement.
I'll move for a reading.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whimley, seconded by Ms. Cooper Smith. Second reading. Item eight, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item nine is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a first amendment to fee and rule of tax agreement, buy-in between Orangeburg County and Orangeburg County UFP Cameron slash LLC and UFP Real Estate LLC and UFP NAC LLC, providing for the location of a project in a multi-county industrial park and other matters related there.
Yes, sir. Presently, the county has a fee agreement with UFP Cameron LLC and UFP Real Estate LLC. The prospect desires to move the location of this expansion to a site in Roseville, and the ordinance before you is seeking to amend the present fee to include the moving of this investment to this new site and to make sure that place this site in a multi-county industrial park. So we have a present fee in lieu, however, they found a new site and want to make sure that they get the appropriate incentives, and so we have to amend this fee, present fee, and we have to make sure we capture those incentives as well as place the new development or the new site in multi-county industrial park.
Questions?
Is something new?
It's the acquisition of North American Container.
You know, I think this, hit a motion in a second. Did you pass that item?
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
I made the motion, but they go move the headquarters to Roseville, and the plant in Roseville.
Yes, sir. That's my understanding. It's more accommodating to what they need to do.
Essentially, this was a project that was approved last year, UFP, and when they announced they had plans to build at Matthews Industrial Park, they acquired the building. They have since acquired North American Container, so they're gonna combine the services under one at Roseville. So it's just combining the two projects into one.
What we pass for the Matthew Park will be none of ours.
No, sir. It will, it will literally just shift over to Roseville, and then we have this combined effort between UFP and North American Container. And the state is doing the same thing, the state moved there and sent us.
Extended to North American?
Yes, sir.
That's what it's doing?
Yes, sir.
You're taking the new and putting on top, don't stretch it out?
And actually investing more money.
Yeah, I see some investments going in there.
Yeah.
All this is being done by the same company?
Yes, sir.
So there will be no activity on the Matthew Industrial Park?
There is activity on the engineering side, they will continue to own that property, and we are working with them on placing someone in that building.
They have an active project.
We have an active project right now.
I second here with most.
Moved by Mr. Livingston, and seconded by Mr. Whimley, that we pass the ordinance as was explained by the Development Commission Director and Administrator in their light. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion is kept. Item ten is an ordinance authorizing the.
If I may, Chairman, we have item ten and eleven, I believe we're at twelve.
Okay, item number twelve, these are planning commission resolution and ordinance for its reading. Item twelve is to change the joint dedication of parcel, which is tax map number zero-one-seven four dash twenty dash zero-eight dash two zero-one at Ford Ninety-Five Sultan Street in Orangeburg, by the ownership of number twenty, as grant for residential general district to rural community district for the purpose of establishing a full-service restaurant and lounge. Heard some explanation on that, and we're doing the public comments, council, whether the motion is second.
I make a motion that we do not pass this resolution, this, pass this recommendation.
Or we accept it.
Accept the recommendation of the planning commission.
We have the planning commission.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and seconded by Mr. Whimley, that we accept the recommendation of the planning commission on this item. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item fourteen is inducement resolution providing for a fee to rule of tax agreement between Orangeburg County and Project Run.
Yes, sir. May I please counsel? The prospect wishes to remain anonymous at this time, and we will refer to the project as Project Hunter. The prospect has promised a minimal investment of thirty million dollars, that consists of seventeen point two in buildings, twelve point four in machinery and equipment. They've also promised a minimal of eighty-two new full-time jobs. They're seeking a fifteen-year, fifteen-year SSR C, and the fee agreement would have a thirty-year term. They do plan on placing this expansion in multi-county industrial park with Dorchester County.
Said how many employees?
Eighty-two, minimum eighty-two new jobs.
And that's over what period of time?
They would have five years to fulfill that promise, counsel.
All right, you've heard the explanation, and a motion is second for passing of item fourteen. Moved by Mr. Livingston, seconded by Mr. Ravenel, that we pass item fifteen on Project Run. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion is kept. Next section is official action, and item fifteen, which is a table of the twenty-twenty Orangeburg County Council regular session schedule, and also item sixteen is a request for a pool of the twenty-twenty period holiday schedule for Orangeburg County employees and employees related. I think both of us were pretty screwed, so I would get a motion and a second for passage of item fifteen, sixteen. Second. Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and seconded by Mr. Ravenel, that we pass item fifteen and sixteen is related to the schedule for twenty-twenty. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion is kept. Next area is procurement. We got A, B, C, D, E, F. First one is item eight, which is fiscal year nineteen dash eleven fourteen dash county administrative second-floor renovation. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a FY nineteen, request for proposal FY nineteen nine-one-one-four was requested and prepared for Orangeburg County second-floor administration building. Our proposal was advertised on the website and bid net, and the proposal will due November twenty-first, and council received one proposal from Lynn Rich Contracting in an amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It's been looked at by state and local preferences, and the contractor is deemed responsible bidder, and the bid is deemed responsible by the Division of勘察ers for procurement.
Well, are you ever seeing people like that that did this?
Yes, sir. Some are saying.
Let's go to the project.
The area that's being focused on is the areas that were vacated by voter registration, and what we have to have is a need for the expansion of the HR office to be able to allow additional space for meetings with individuals about their different benefits and stuff. Right now, there's only one literally door office in there, and you go in there and talk to multiple employees about their personal business, HIPAA laws, HIPAA rules, and stuff like that, so you need to expand the space, and now that voter registration's moved out, it allows us to stretch those areas out and make more areas and space for alternative things that are yet to come.
And those are the only, these are the only person that?
Yes, sir. The timeframe you wish you have to work from in several of those offices, we can't allow them to do that stuff during the day most of the time because of that, so they're gonna have to do a lot of after-hours and alternative work schedules, so we understand that, that's why we're not allowing people to do that, because they basically have to work a lot of nights and weekends to get it fucking done.
If there's a motion, a second we pass this.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Orange, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, that we pass item eight on the renovation of the second floor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is kept. Item D is fiscal year nineteen dash one-one-two-one, is the Bowman Public Works Building. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir. In the sake of the Bowman Public Works Building, we're actually moving our public works camp until another piece of property that the county owns, as a request for proposals FY nineteen one-one-two-one was requested and prepared for the Bowman Public Works Building, and is located on Orangeburg County property. Reportings were advertised on the county website and bid net, proposal will due on November twenty-first. The county received five proposals, and this is recommended by the committee and the Division Director, Mr. Henry Summers, Richard Hall, and the procurement department, that the bid be awarded to a low bit of Suncoast Construction in an amount of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Sir, Mr. Ravenel?
We can't find it right now, but I know there were several bidders that did on the project, and some of them were substantially higher than the run of the project. My thing is that in the past, I just hope they don't have a lot of chance, although I think there's a percentage that they can't have a chance a lot of, is that correct?
Correct, and this project is pretty cut and dry. We already put the pad out there, so we can basically arrange the structure.
What's the public project?
That's the public works camp building that's going on the back of the Bowman building.
Yeah, I know, what, what the building?
The camp building for the camp supervisors in that area. Same camp shed that's.
I know, a shop, sheds or?
Yes, a shop, it's a shop bench, yeah. And I'll yield to Mr. Richard Hall, he's the project supervisor on it.
Basically, it's a fifty-by-fifty building. It's got an area that'll hold a motor grader in it, office, break room, bathrooms, building's fifty-by-fifty, with a sixty-foot sliding door. Whole building construction, metal sides, metal roof.
They not utilized any of the core building?
No, sir. We have different areas that we're gonna use for that, and then we're trying to restrict access to certain things to eliminate people having access to different materials, and the cost of this project is covered by the sale of the property that they're leaving from, that was covered in an additional project approval that you guys gave a couple months.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
There is a substantial difference in some of the figures here. Does that one have anything to do with the quality of work?
No, ma'am. It's, it's just a matter of you had to come in and look at the site, and we actually prepared the pad for them, so they, they basically don't have to do any of the site work, they just have to come in and construct the building, so that's the majority of the costs is already taken care of in that, in that project also. You feel like that's a reasonable cost, and you have part of the managers have to feel from start to finish, and if there's any quality issues, you address that.
One question, can I get a motion second?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, seconded by Mr. Ravenel, that we pass the bid for the Bowman Public Works Building. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is kept. Item number C is the fiscal year nineteen dash one-one-two-two-eight, ULC Training, head mission project, I guess, is that's the name?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the emergency operations center training facility, which is the whole armament of their building that we were able to get, that was donated to us by the federal government, and, you know, another step into getting that building functional, which is already paying dividends for storage and other assets that we use it for for emergency services. This project proposal was FY nineteen one-one-two-two-eight, that was requested, prepared for, and it was listed and advertised on the county website and bid net, proposal will due on November twenty-second. County received two proposals from two different vendors, and it's of the approval of the Division Director and the directors that will be using the facility, as well as the procurement office that the bid be awarded to, the low bit of Patamato area in Chittler in an amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Thanks, sir. Questions? None? Can I get a motion in a second that we pass item C? Any no questions? Somebody give me a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Whimley, and seconded by Mr. Lawrence, that we pass item C for the ULC Training project. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is kept. Item D is the sprinkler system at the YMCA, and that's emergency.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is an emergency request that we need to get taken care of right away. The YMCA is being the pool area because of dehumidification issues with all the chlorine that's usually full of that size. It has led to some corrodes of the sprinkler system heads and things that has to be done in order for the building to be able to pass fire inspection, so we're requesting that we allow to have the sprinkler system upgraded as we do all the other repairs, because it needs to be done at the time when we drain the pool, and that's part of the process of redoing that whole area inside the pool area. And it's in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars to life Crawford Sprinkler Company is who is gonna be doing the work.
The inside pool?
Yes, sir. The big, the big sprinkler pool inside. It had a malfunction with the dehumidification system.
Why we got to put sprinkler oil in the sprinkler?
That's the code, man. I wish we didn't, but that's.
Somebody need to think about that.
That's the building code. Well, I know, I wish we didn't, but we got to.
How, how would you want to say that?
Just for the sake of that, though, since we mentioned that before you take that up, while I let you make your vote, but I do need to remind the citizens about something about that after you make your vote.
All right, well, any more questions from Congress on that? Now, can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, that we pass item D on the sprinkler system at the YMCA. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is kept. Mr. Administrator, you want to say something?
Yes, sir. While we're talking about the renovations on the YMCA, you know, anytime you have something that's building a facility, you have to be able to keep the maintenance, and as part of that, we will be resurfacing the competition pool and the area of the pool, the anatorium ceiling walls and the doors. We'll be installing a new dehumidification system, as well as rooftop HVACs and replacing key components of the sprinkler system, which you just approved. This is to note that the indoor pool will be closed starting Friday, November twenty-ninth, and at the conclusions of the robust cash, which has already happened, and this will limit access to locker rooms and other parts until we get this renovation done. We've been talking to contractors a lot. We've been talking to contractors to let them know how important it is to get that done as soon as possible, but it's will improve the pool area and the pool activities in that area to give better dehumidification and constant air. So we just wanted to let the citizens know that they need to just be patient with us because we're trying to upgrade the facility to keep it vibrant like it is intended to be.
Mr. Administrator?
Go ahead.
Well, this renovation, will this come out of any of the capital projects sale type?
Yes, ma'am. That's the bulk of it, where it's coming from and bond proceeds.
I'd like to have a comment as far as heating of the pool because when I was going out there, Mr. Young, many a times the water was too cold and we couldn't get in there. Is there any guarantee that the water's gonna be stable forever or at least for at least another two or three years?
Well, it's a catch twenty-two. The robust people want the water hot, but the competitive swimmers want it cool. And so there's a balance between the water temperature. But the dehumidification is what offsets your feeling when you get in there because the temperature outside of the pool area is higher than it would be anywhere else in the facility so that when you get in, it offsets the temperature of the water. So once we do the dehumidification system, revamp the entire pool like you're doing, we should, you should have a constant feel and then any adjustments will be done directly by the Y staff. But this renovations will help for us there.
Any other questions? Motion is second.
So, have you made a motion? So move.
Second.
Yeah, you have a motion.
I thought, well...
On this one?
I thought they had...
Was this one, man? You didn't make a motion on this one?
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you. If you was gonna try to get the comments for... Item P is a really concrete site prep. Mr. Penney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a proposal that's needed to finalize a part of a project that the council in Owens District, that is a community center that they're putting together. This proposal for equipment, labor, insurance is to be added so that we can complete the work of the parking and other areas that we wanted to get done. This is something that would be more beneficial based upon the court to go ahead and have done versus us doing it ourselves. And we're presenting this addition to this project in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars for the aspect of continuing on with the parking in the driveway and the parking area. That will be done by the contractor versus done by us. And there are de-dub credits, as you see, for the stuff that we changed or did in our and we're requesting approval for that.
Questions? Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Any other question?
I have a question. I'm interested in how the credits work. So is the amount that the county's gonna pay one forty-two, six forty-eight or one forty-two, six forty-eight minus?
Minus ten. That's not too exceeding. It actually will probably be cheaper than those because we're still working to save money everywhere we can.
Thank you.
Well, this is a continuation of a project that started a long time ago.
Yes, sir. This is a community project, same similar to what you did in North County.
If I mean, but this part that we working on now, are we finishing it up? You know, this is not a brand new project.
No, no, no. This project's been under construction for a while now. It's probably about the same timeline as what you had dealt with in North. It's just a little bit slower.
Yeah, okay, can I give a motion second for passage of E?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Second. Move by Mr. Lawrence and second by Mr. Howard that we pass the E, this is a really concrete site prep, site. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, aye is having a motion to carry. Item F is environmental abatement at the new library.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As part of the start of the work to move towards the renovation and building of the new library, one of the things that we have looked at is, and you have approved, is us taking advantage of the opportunity that the contractor put on the table about full demolition of the building and start a new build. That requires as best as abatement that we feel like it would be in the best interest of the county to allow that company to handle that so that the demolition and abatement work could fall within our standard. And it's our recommendation to reward that to Oakin Construction, who is the proposed contractor for the project in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
All right, voices? I know somebody asked what happened.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments?
That much, yeah, to say that?
Yes, sir. A lot. The tile, the floors has that master coming back, the floor tiles in the, it's not the interior walls, it's walls behind the interior walls that got...
That's on the...
No, sir. On the digway.
On the store, too?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's a lot of it in there. It was more than we felt comfortable handling so we felt like we needed to let them go ahead and do that from start to finish.
All right, also on the company, can I get a motion second for approval of this environmental abatement?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Move by Mr. Ravenell, second by Mr. Lawrence for item number F, the environmental abatement at the new site, library site. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman, before we go to tax and tourism, can I bring something up? I don't know if we read in the paper in the last week or so, that Central, Central Forest Office put two solar farms in Orangeburg County in the newspaper. We didn't, we hadn't done any kind of fee and lose with Central Carolina. We done fee and lose with somebody else. And they turned around and already sold it to Central Carolina, is that right, Greg?
No, sir.
We never, we never was introduced because Central Carolina ain't know what to do.
It's a purchase agreement. It's a purchase agreement. So there's selling power...
The point I'm trying to make is, we approve a solar farm to one company and before they ever break ground on it, they sold it to somebody else. I don't think we obligated to the company that is buying, that they're clause in that contract saying that they can sell it and if fee and lose goes along with the sale.
I'm not quite understanding the question. I'd be happy to address that in an executive session.
The two projects, you know, the two projects.
I'm familiar with the project, but as far as the details, I think we need to discuss that.
You read the newspaper where Central Carolina's putting two solar farms in Orangeburg County?
Yes, sir, I read.
Which is being identified as the two projects that we...
My understanding is those, that company, it didn't sell the entire solar farms. What it's doing is selling power to Central Electric.
We need to get clarification on that.
That's why I'm asking, I think we need clarification.
Okay. The next thing is a recommendation from the Tax and Tourism Committee, now U O P. There's only two items on there, Mr. Penney.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Tax and Tourism Committee met on November twenty-sixth following recommendations were made in San Antonio, the country, requested funds for the marketing plan in the amount of twenty thousand. That's something that we traditionally fund. And the Grassroots Sports Inc. requested funds for the system with the super regional championship that has been held here for the last few years that brings a lot of individuals saving money back through hotel use and eating at establishments in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five sixteen. And the total funds requested, recommended were forty-two thousand, five sixteen. Funds available for disbursement was fifty-one thousand, one forty-nine sixteen to the citizens who are not aware of those funds or tax and tourism funds that are actually generated by states in the hotel. There's a percentage fee that comes along with that and so it's used to basically fund things that promote tourism back to the community, to put heads in the biz, as we call it, into the hotel sector.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
Express Grassroots Sports Incorporated. They have been giving money to them for the purposes for the museum and which is good because they bring money into...
Yes, ma'am, they bring a lot of people here.
Yeah, into our county. But where are these activities held? I don't remember reading anything about...
They held at the gymnasiums all over the county. They use the high schools, gymnasiums in the city, the Y M C A and the colleges.
Well, it's kind of low profile.
Well, it's not. If you've got kids that play basketball...
Oh, kids that play basketball.
Yes, ma'am. You notice when you ride around town, you see all these little groups of basketball teams trying to raise money.
That's why they're raising...
With those things, they go, they go all over the country with that AAU basketball. And one thing I do know, we'll send our sons, but we going with our daughters. And when these female teams travel, the whole family coming, I promise you that. And so when they have this regional championship for weekend and several days, you have all those AAU teams come from around the country in a lot of cases and they fill up hotels and eat in the restaurants. If you're out during those weekends, you will see them. They have invited us to several games and stuff and championship games, but it's just, you know, timing of it, we have other events that go on at the same time. So, but they are here, it's been documented and the benefit is real.
Any other comments? Can I get a motion second for approving the recommendation of the committee? Second. Second, move by Mr. Cooper Smith, second by Mr. Lawrence that we approve the recommendation of the Tourism Advisory Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, aye is having a motion to carry. Next is a vote for executive session and under the code thirty-four dash seventy-eight, be allowed to agree executive session to the discussion of laws relating to the proposed location expansion or the revision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. And so the same thing with, for discussion of negotiation intended to propose contractual agreements. So we got two items, we're going executive session to talk about economic development update for project cooler and project hunt and we were going contractual matters to discuss contractual agreements, matters with Piedmont Companies Inc. So can I get a motion second to go into that session for those items?
I'm hoping that we go into executive session for items just read by the chairman.
Second. Move by Mr. Orange and second by Mr. Ravenell that we go into that session for those items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, aye is having a motion to carry. Before we vote for adjournment, then Congress, we got any comments?
Yes, sir, I have a comment. I have been, all of us, most of us have been through three, I think, three executive directors of the Y. We now have our sofa and I have never seen one come to a two consecutive meetings in a row. Mr. Demetrius, you probably been here tonight to find out about the renovation of the Y and the sprinkler system, but thank you for attending.
Mr. Demetrius, the council, I would just like to thank you all and Mr. Freddie Young and the county council and this entire community, first of all, for welcoming my son and my family to Orangeburg. And I would just like to, again, to send my sincere appreciation for the efforts in upgrading our facilities. Those are some things that have been long overdue as the members have definitely made me aware of since I stepped in in October. And again, I just send my sincere gratitude to the council. And as I told you all in my first, the first meeting I attended, I have a vested interest in Orangeburg because Orangeburg is where my Y M C A is located, where your Y M C A is located, to this day. And again, I'm just ecstatic about the partnership that the county has with the Y M C A of Columbia and I look forward to attending very many more meetings and just staying informed about what's going on in the community. So again, thank you all, Mr. Administrator. Again, can't thank you enough for what you're doing and Mr. Hall as well for what you guys are doing to keep our project on time because, again, we know that the month of January in particular is very, very busy to Y M C As. People make those New Year's resolutions and what have you. So again, we just look forward to this project progressing and just the improvements will be very much needed and we're just looking forward to it. So thank you all again.
Thank you, sir. Any...
We have in the audience Kevin Gadsden. Please, Kevin, say something. I have to recognize you. He's one of my little proteges with the students and stuff. And anytime I see the students come in, it makes me feel good because I'd like to see more of the students get involved.
But I'm one of the mentors here in Orangeburg. I got a foundation that's called Giving a Child a Dream Foundation. Need some of my students that we have with me. Mr. Young over there, I appreciate it. He support a lot. We used the Dr. Martin Luther King monument at the beginning of the year. We never take the kids to Atlanta to the big event that they have and get charter buses and we take them down there to the council. To everybody that put that together, I'm grateful. I thank you all.
Thank you very much for coming.
Hold on, Mr. Lawrence, let Mr. Lawrence say it.
I want to say thank you, Kevin, and please continue. And if there's anything, and I'd like to say, I want to speak in behalf of the council and Mr. Young and all of us, anything that we can do to help Orangeburg and especially our youth, please call on us. We were in the phone book, right, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to say something about Barbara Williams with the N double A C P. Barbara, would you like to tell us about the two plaques that I saw that was in the paper over the weekend?
Yeah.
She's the chairperson, the chairperson, the president of the Orangeburg local N double A C P. Please, ma'am.
Well, any time we get a chance to...
We can't hear you.
Anytime we have a chance to do something positive for the community and the surrounding areas, that's what we do. So the article that you may have read this morning was in reference to game changers that we have as our initiatives, which are economic development, health education, voter registration empowerment, we deal with criminal justice, police policing of the community. And we also deal with, the ones we got today was in reference to working with the youth, voter empowerment and health initiatives.
Thank you and keep it up. And to the young man who's chairperson of the Y M C A, I want to say thank you very much too for coming and thank you for doing a great job. Thank you.
Over and over again, Mr. Chairman.
So move.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a statement.
All right, well, before that, can I just go ahead and carry that, did you...
Yes, sir.
It's moved by Mr. Wimbley, it's second by Mr. Lawrence that we stand adjourned. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Penney for me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of things that you get calls for and a lot of times it being county administrator. One of the ones over the holiday was one of the ones I don't like to get with sadness. We had a county, current working county employee, Ms. Nadia Thomas, passed away. She had just had a baby three weeks ago and the baby's father is sheriff deputies, Mr. Tony Hartwell. These are fine county employees and we actually pray for their families. The young lady was in her late twenties and it was just something that was unexpected. We can't question God. She was a nine-one-one telecommunicator for us at the county. And you can only imagine when you do that job to see or get a call and the person at the home is calling their coworkers there for one of their coworkers. And so it was a trying event because we did all we could. The young lady passed away and then having the telecommunicators still have professionalism and wherewithal as well as definitely, well, to finish out shifts and come and do the job that they do every day to protect us. And just wanted to let them know that their condolences, others, to her family. Because it's not often that, you know, we've had people that retired and went on, but very rarely that we've had an employee die during the time of their service and our condolences go out to her family.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and thank all of you all for attending our meeting tonight.